And I'll return thanks and if you would please stand with me, let's pray. Our most gracious heavenly father, we're so thankful to know that you're in our presence tonight. We just pray that you would guide us and lead us through the work that we're gonna do, the service that we provide to the citizens of the city of Durant. Lord, we pray that you would bless this city and bless all of its citizens. We pray a special prayer for the staff that work so hard every day and diligently to provide good service to the citizens of Durant and to grow this community and to make it a good place to live. Lord, we pray for those who are sick and suffering and grieving, especially during this time, and those who are having other struggles, Lord, that you know about. We just pray that you would bless them, help them, especially through this season. We're so thankful for Jesus, we're reminded of the reason for this season. We're so thankful for him and for all that he's done for us. All these things we pray in Jesus's name, amen. At this time, I will call on the Boy Scout troop number 615 to present the colors, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job to Boy Scout troop 615, thank you gentlemen, thank you very much. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Shear.
Here.
Councilmember Fuller. Vice Mayor Simulescu.
Here.
Mayor Tucker.
Here. At this time, I would invite the council and the city manager down front with me for a swearing-in ceremony of our new police chief.
I, and state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma and that I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly any money or other valuable thing for the performance or non-performance of any act or duty pertaining to my office other than the compensation allowed by law. I swear that I will faithfully discharge my duties as the police chief of the city of Durant to the best of my ability and will obey the lawful orders of my commanding officers. Further, I will protect the rights, lives and property of all citizens and uphold the honor of the police profession with my life if need be. Ladies and gentlemen, I present Chief Jesse Petty, the new chief of the Durant Police Department.
Congratulations Chief Petty, and we welcome you aboard and we look forward to your service to the city.
We are now going to honor some of our employees that have been here a very long time as president of the Oklahoma Municipal League this year. I get the honor of doing this. These awards do come from the Oklahoma Municipal League for years of service. Our first honor roll of service is Philip Hightower in recognition of 25 years of service with the city of Durant. Our next honor roll of service is Joseph Clark in recognition of 25 years of service with the city. Congratulations Joe. And our last one for this evening is honor roll of service for David Anderson, another 25 years of service for the city of Durant.
Kathy Moore says it's a great day to be in Durant, and today is especially a great day to be in Durant. Appreciate all the visitors that came. We're gonna get into our regular business tonight, and then you're welcome to stay for every bit of this that you want to be involved in. But if you have other places to go, and I know Emily Redman does, that's fine as well. Thank you so much for coming out tonight and helping us as well. Our next item on our agenda for tonight is consent items under paragraph one, under the Order of Business. There are several items on the consent agenda. Approval amendments, budget supplements, a change to the meeting schedule, insurance updates, and a couple of other items. Are there any items that the council would request to be removed from the consent agenda for additional consideration and discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion for the consent agenda tonight?
Motion to approve consent items.
We have a motion and a second to approve all the consent agenda items. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Shear.
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu.
Yes.
Mayor Tucker.
Yes. Item two is for those items that are removed, we had none. So we'll move on to item number three, information items. And that is the October 24 financial reports and the November 24 sales tax report by Ms. Ann Chin.
You hear me? How about that?
Get closer.
Aunt Joanne, you have the October's three major funds, general fund, capital improvement, and DCUA, that's utility authority fund. And the first one is our general fund. You can see that the revenue, the total revenue are over budgeted by about 2.9%. And then I highlight one is use tax, it's 43.63. And actually, right now, this October year today is supposed to be 33.33. So we are over about 10%, over our budget. And but our sales tax is, I cannot say it's not good, but still under our control because when we do the budget, we do it really conservative. And for the expenditure that, departments expenditure are under budget for about 2.74%. So overall, our year today is $13,370, $70, yeah. In August, remember that we have three payrolls, so this year today will be slowly accumulate, I hope. And then the next one is capital improvement. This is just information that how, all the capital improvement items is on this report. And the third one is the DCUA, Durant Utility Authority. You can see that I break down several, the water revenue about 36.67% and the sewer revenue about 34.85% and the sanitation is 30.30%. So overall, it's not, it's still under our tracking. And the total revenue, including the fund balance, is over budgeted by the 0.91. And the department expenses is under budgeted by about 8.72. So the year today, our balance is $976,521. And then is our sales tax. This is November sales tax, and we've got $1,663,528.11. And I want to point out the 1-4-2 multispoke facility for DMSC and the 1-4 SOSU improvement, this two quarter cents, this is the last revenue we were receiving. For the next month, that we're going to have the half cent of the sales tax instead of this two quarter cents. And the next one is 10 years report for the 1%. And you can see compared to the prior years, the same months, we are negative, we are less in the last year. But overall, this revenue still, how do you say that? It's a little bit higher than our budget, it's about higher about 0.64. So it's still under our, the way that we try to manage it. So it's still good. But I will continue to track the revenue. I hope the next month and December, it will be shopping time, holiday time, supposed to be.
I know that it would be anecdotal, but I wonder if there's any thought on the decrease year over year for this month's sales tax? I know it would be anecdotal, but just curious.
The sales tax is most unpredictable, not like the proping tax. You will know that how much you can increase and you can predict how many revenue. But the sales tax is really hard to tell. Some people that maybe this month, they will shop here more, and maybe they just go to across the river and they shop over there. So it's really hard to say.
Any questions for Ann on the financial reports? Appreciate your report, thank you very much. Okay, next is, we're now in the administration portion of the agenda, which is item four. So 4A will be to consider approval of resolution R 2024-16, calling for the nonpartisan general election of councilmember for awards one and two in the city of Durant, Oklahoma. Any comments that need to be made on that? Comes around every four years, right? Two for, yeah, two for Councilwoman Fuller, that's true. So any comments or questions on that? There is a resolution in there, any comments or questions on the resolution? Okay, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve 4A.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4A on the agenda tonight. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Shear.
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller. Vice Mayor Simulescu. Mayor Tucker.
Yes. Next is item 4B, which is to consider approval of mayoral recommendation from municipal judge for a new judicial term beginning in January, January 13, '25, and ending January the 4th, '27, and also an alternate municipal judge for a term with the same dates, January 13, '25 to January 4, '27. There are two individuals who have applied for those positions. Their names are Jason Pedraza and Jordan Potts. They're, I'm sorry, Morgan Potts, apologize for that. And their information is in, I believe it's in your packet. Any questions or comments on those recommendations? Hearing none, as they are my recommendations, I will move that we approve item 4B1, which is Jason Pedraza. We have a motion and a second for item 4B1, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Shear.
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller. Vice Mayor Simulescu.
Yes.
Mayor Tucker.
Yes. Similarly, I would make a motion, we approve Morgan Potts, which would be item 4B2, to be the alternate municipal judge, and that's my motion. We have a motion and a second to approve item 4B2, the clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Shear.
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller. Vice Mayor Simulescu.
Yes.
Mayor Tucker.
Yes. Next is item 4C, which is to consider approval of a lease agreement between the city of Durant and Trust Works LLC. Mr. Hightower.
Good evening. Trust Works wanted to renew their contract, their lease with the city of Durant, but they didn't want to go for the but they didn't want to go for the, they didn't want to go the full five years that they had been going. So they did a new term for a three-year lease. And they did raise the lease up to $6,000 a month instead of the $5,000 that it was. And Tom, you looked over this?
I reviewed the lease. This is a long-term tenant. They or their predecessor have been long-term tenants out there at that building by the airport, so.
And they pay their rent on time, I guess? I wouldn't, okay. I don't have any questions. Any comments or questions from the council on the lease? Hearing none, I move that we approve the lease agreement between the city of Durant and Trust Works as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, which is item four C, the lease agreement. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Shear.
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu.
Yes.
Mayor Tucker.
Yes. Next is item four D, which is to consider award of bid for motor fuel supply. We were just handed, I believe, an update to the bid. And my understanding is that there was a, an RFP sent out to seven or eight qualified vendors, and we received two bids back. And then yesterday or today, one of those bids was withdrawn. So we basically have one valid bid now to consider tonight, and it's with McCraw Oil, who has a local office here, First Avenue. Many of you are probably familiar. And so the contract is in front of you, the details at least of it are in front of you. And we're happy to go through those if there are comments or questions. And my understanding, do we have a current contract or has it expired?
It has expired.
It has expired. So we either need to get a contract in place quickly, or we'll just be buying fuel with our P cards as we can buy it right from whatever station in town. Comments? Pam, on the contract, any?
Just reiterate what you said, we sent out for several bids and got two. But then, I mean, one of the companies pulled their bid. I think this is a good bid from McCraw Oil, and they are local. And we are all about, you know, doing as much purchasing of what we can with contracts with local merchants. So I think it's, I think it's a good, it's a good bid.
Mayor, I would tell you, I looked at the previous contract that we had and this contract, and it's, this is, this is a comparable contract to what we had before, and in some ways, it's better. This bases the fuel purchase price at a flat markup over what the rack rate is in Ardmore, Oklahoma. Our previous contract used Ardmore Caddo Mills, whichever, wherever they got their fuel. Caddo Mills typically had a higher rate for whatever reason. Ardmore's closer, and they generally have a lower rack rate. So regardless of where McCraw gets their fuel for that particular day, the base, the price that we pay is based on the Ardmore rack rate, which tends to be lower. So I think this is a favorable, favorable contract, and has probably some clearer terms than maybe a previous contract had. And so staff's done a good job on this one.
And I do, along with what the city manager said, I appreciate doing business locally. And McCraw's actually got their start here in Durant. This location on First Avenue was the very first location that McCraw's purchased. And they've, you know, obviously grown substantially since then, mostly in Texas. But this is where it all began. So that's kind of a neat feature as well. Any comments or questions from council on the fuel contract? Hearing no questions, I would move that we award this bid for motor fuel supply to McCraw Oil Company.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item four D one, which is the award of bid. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Shear.
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu.
Yes.
Mayor Tucker.
Yes. And I know city attorney and staff has worked hard on the contracts as well to refine some things, and it has improved it substantially even in the last 48 hours. So my compliments to you for that, for that work, for the benefit of the city. So based on that, I would move for approval for the contract percent to the bid award, which is item four D two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item four D two. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Shear.
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu.
Yes.
Mayor Tucker.
Yes. Next is item four E, which is to consider approval of state of Oklahoma Department of Transportation supplemental and modification agreement number one, which is project maintenance financing and right-of-way agreement for Durant Rails to Trails project, and I won't read the number, which is a state job, which is contract 2024-63. So who will present that?
I'm going to.
Okay.
This is actually a housekeeping item. We were looking at this contractor agreement also, and they were showing, I mean, we, this project's been going on for some time. And the city had already paid the portion that we were supposed to pay. But then when we looked at the agreement, it showed more. So I mean, it's in your packet. So they were showing that we were to pay $416,933, it was actually $344,700. So they, we contacted them, they cleaned it up, and sent us this new agreement that needs to be approved by the board.
Comments or questions on?
Any comments or questions on the update to the contract? Just a correction to the contract? Hearing none, I move for approval of item four E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item four E, which is the ODOT supplemental and modification agreement. And the clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Shear.
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu.
Yes.
Mayor Tucker.
Yes. Next is item four F, which is consideration and possible approval for a replat and rezone request for property located at 301 North Fourth Avenue, which is an ordinance of O 2024-14, section one, in case you guys are interested, it's right over here.
Directly behind us at the corner there. Good evening, everyone. This is from the Bryan County Commissioner's Office. Did it fall down on him? I will work with that. They're looking to rezone from R3 to C3. I know, I don't think I put that on the, missed that on the staff report there. The surrounding properties is a mixture of residential and commercial. It's C3 directly to the south of the proposed rezone. They're looking to build their new admin offices there. They already own the property and the parking lot next to it. They're just looking to replat to connect all that together as one property.
Any concerns or questions about the county's rezoning and replating of that property?
I mean, I know the only conversation was the future zoning was for R1. But where this is at, I don't really think it's a gray area.
I agree.
Right.
I don't think it's an issue.
Right. I agree too.
There is so much of that along through there, there is commercial already that the residential really doesn't start until beyond that point there, so.
I move for approval then, item four F one, which is to approve the replat and rezone request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Shear.
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu.
Yes.
Mayor Tucker.
Yes. In order for this to be in effect immediately, we will have to pass an emergency clause for this particular change and approval. And so I make a motion that we approve the emergency clause, which is ordinance O 2024-14, section two, for this action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, which is item four F two. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Shear.
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu.
Yes.
Mayor Tucker.
Yes. Next is item four G one, consideration and possible approval for a replat and rezone for property located at South 22nd Avenue and West Mississippi Street, and partially described as a part of, and I won't go through the whole legal description. And this has to do with ordinance O 2024-15, section one.
Yes, this is a rezone and preliminary plat application. Mr. Kim is looking at doing quite a few single-family residential properties with a possibility of multifamily in the northern part of the Second Egress Road coming out into South 22nd. It abuts R3. It's got a little, the reason for the current zoning is A1 and I2. There's a small part in the northwest corner that is industrial that'll need rezoned as well to R3. Future land use does show all this area as residential low density, but it was determined that that's probably a little more, to get it where you need to be, R3 is where we need to be on the single family due to the lot sizes.
So on the plat, it's difficult for me to see, but I can see where the one egress and the other egress is, but I don't see what street that dumps out onto. Is it all 22nd Avenue?
No, the northern egress will come out into 22nd, and the other means of egress will come out into West, yeah, West Mississippi Street.
Okay, okay. It's just not clear on the survey, is why I ask. And then during the, during the meeting, I heard the question, and I asked Mr. Jackson about this earlier, but I just wanted to clarify on the record. I heard the question about sewer service. This will be provided by the city or will it be private?
It'll be provided by, it'll be all public, the streets will be public, so.
That was my assumption, but I wanted to be able to hear it on the record. So I couldn't in that other meeting, so thank you very much for that. Any comments or questions on this?
What was planning and zoning's recommendation?
They approved?
Approved proposal with contingency that the final plat closely reflect the preliminary plat proposed.
That's always a good idea.
They have all the, like sidewalks and streetlights and all that fun stuff.
The only odd thing about this plat is this natural gas line that runs right down the middle of it.
Right down the middle of the same street.
So, you know, now it's a grass feature, I guess, they can mow, right? But other than that, seem pretty straightforward.
I was gonna say, my only question was, I mean, this all looks like single-family homes, but it says possibly multifamily in the future, so.
Yeah, if you look up there toward the northern part of the property, that bloomway, that second means of egress, the two large open areas there, he has brought up the possibility of multifamily. I, I.
There's multifamily in that area already, so that's not a huge change. The multifamily's about a block, two blocks to the east from where that portion of the plat is. Any other comments or questions?
Was the planning and zoning commission, was it, was it a unanimous vote?
They were all, yes. We did have, there was some concern with the president's set of going R3 to meet the smaller lot requirements. I think it was determined that for this area to develop kind of the way you want to see it going, that this isn't setting a negative precedent, but that was just what Planning and Zoning Commission had spoke about, so.
60-foot lots. That's what it was.
Gotcha.
Right.
I mean, I don't, I don't love the R3, I'd rather it be R1, but.
Any other comments or questions? Do I hear a motion?
I hear Councilwoman Fuller's concern about the R1 versus R3. I think that maybe, and Drew may be able to address this, that if they stick to the plat, it'll all still have to be multifamily, just on a little bit smaller lots. But it'll be essentially similar to R1, but with smaller lots. So they can't come back without having it replatted and put duplexes or triplexes or other multifamily units on there.
Correct, with the current lot size, they could do nothing but single family on that lot size.
And this is a preliminary plat?
And I know it's just, what do we want to see our town grow as? I mean, I'd rather houses not be stacked in one right next to the next. You want to see room for those trees and some space there, but it's just a question of what do we want to see in the future of Durant? I mean, for that area, is this what's there? Yes, is that what we want to continue to be there?
I don't think we need varieties of stuff, so I think that's fine. I don't see it being a big deal either way. I think, seems like he made all the requirements, I think, I feel like it should be fine.
I'd like to make the motion to approve four G.
Four G one, right?
Four G one.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item four G one. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Shear.
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu.
Yes.
Mayor Tucker.
Yes. Next is item four G two. And again, in order to make this effective immediately, we would need to invoke the emergency clause, which is ordinance O 2024-15, section two. And I make a motion that we approve the emergency clause for four, which is item four G two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item four G two, the emergency clause. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Shear.
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu.
Yes.
Mayor Tucker.
Yes. Next is item four H, which is consideration and possible approval for a conditional use permit for a property located at 1408 South 9th Avenue.
Yes, this is a conditional use permit application for a storage unit that is already in existence and in use there on South 9th, just south of the turnoff to the city landfill there. Their original request was a rezone. Planning Commission recommended the applicant seek a conditional use permit. Due to city, according to city code, it has to be industrial in order to be a storage facility. The conditional use permit would allow them to expand the existing storage facilities without violating any current ordinances, so.
So it's not industrial now?
No, it is currently, it's commercial, and future land use shows commercial as well.
Planning and zoning's recommendation?
Approval of conditional use permit from planning.
I think their only concern had to do with surfacing of the drives. And I think the owners were, and the builder were all on the same page about doing a chip and seal or whatever. It's not just gravel or dirt. It'll be a hard surface, in other words. Comments or questions on item four H?
Have they got a surface of existing? Yes.
That was what I gathered. That's what I thought I heard him say.
The entire surface of the existing and new will all be resealed and done.
And I believe we've got a representative of the people through here. Want to ask you any questions?
Any questions? No? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve four H.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item four H. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Shear.
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu.
Yes.
Mayor Tucker.
Yes. That's all of the administrative items. Next is item five. Is there any new business to come before the city council tonight? Hearing none, I move for adjournment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's city council meeting. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Shear.
Yes.
Councilmember Fuller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simulescu.
Yes.
Mayor Tucker.
Yes. We stand adjourned. At this time, I will call to order a meeting of the Durant City Utilities Authority. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Shear.
Here.
Trustee Fuller.
Here.
Vice Chairman Simulescu.
Here.
Chairman Tucker.
Here. There are only consent agenda items. The minutes of the last regular meeting held on November the 12th. And then there's this revision to the 25 meeting schedule. And one of the things that I overlooked when we were building the meeting schedule, and just so everyone's clear, in, in the November meeting for council and these other authorities as well, we set that meeting on November the 11th, which happens to be Veterans Day, which happens to also be a holiday for city staff and, and other, not, not everyone, but other folks. And so rather than pull city staff in to work on a, on a holiday, I, I asked that we move the meeting up a week and make it on November the 18th instead of the 11th. And so that is one of the items on the consent agenda. That's item one B. And we can pull that up for further discussion if necessary. Otherwise, we'll consider all the consent items together for approval. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve consent items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, to approve the consent items. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Shear.
Yes.
Trustee Fuller.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu.
Yes.
Chairman Tucker.
Yes. There are no other items on tonight's agenda. Is, is there any new business to come before the utilities authority tonight? Hearing none, I move for adjournment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Durant City Utilities Authority meeting. The clerk will call the roll.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Shear.
Yes.
Trustee Fuller.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu.
Yes.
Chairman Tucker.
Yes, we stand adjourned. At this time, I will call to order a meeting of the Durant Airport Authority. The clerk will call the roll.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Shear.
Here.
Trustee Fuller.
Here.
Vice Chairman Simulescu.
Here.
Chairman Tucker.
Here. Similarly, on tonight's agenda for the airport authority, we have the exact same two items. Meeting schedule changed and approval of minutes from the exact same day last month. Any comments or questions on those items? There are none, I move that we approve all the consent agenda items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item one, which is the consent agenda items. The clerk will call the roll.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Shear.
Yes.
Trustee Fuller.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu.
Yes.
Chairman Tucker.
Yes. There are no other items on tonight's agenda. Is there any new business that needs to come before the airport authority tonight? Hearing none, I move for adjournment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn the Durant Airport Authority meeting tonight. The clerk will call the roll, please.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Shear.
Yes.
Trustee Fuller.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Simulescu.
Yes.
Chairman Tucker.
Yes, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming, especially to the Boy Scouts. Thank you all for being here and, and for presenting the colors to us tonight. We really do appreciate that. Thank you all.
Thank you.